We'll go ahead and begin our meeting. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and begin with our regularly scheduled council meeting. Today is February 6, 2024. Current time is 5:44. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll give an invocation. I'm going to ask Dr. Evans, if you will, to go ahead and give us an invocation at this time.
Thank you. Noah TS Tiduhut, Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and and the glory that this world is and help us to open our eyes to the blessings that are all around us. And I know we have folks that are hurting. Please put your hand on them and make them whole and and help us as a people to work together and to take care of those that are not doing as well. Lord, thank you for this council, these good people. Help us to be mindful leaders, to do good things and to take care of the issues of today, but always with our mind on where we want to lead our people in the years to come. Remember all of our people, and I know many are in other parts of the world, the military or whatever reason that they can't be here or be among our people right now. But help them to feel us and to know the comfort that we are with them, that we feel that we keep them as a part of ourselves. Forgive us when we fail, when we fall short, as we always do. There's always those mistakes and let us do that a little bit better tomorrow and not make those same mistakes. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Councilman Evans. Tonight, we have Treasurer Chapman, who's going to be taking the role and also the minutes this evening. So I'll turn it over to her this time for item two, roll call, declaration of quorum.
Yes. Vice President Jordan Kanuho.
Here.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, here. Cynthia Butler.
Deetaku.
Donna Hare.
Deetaku.
Jean Evans.
Here.
Sammy Kimball.
Here.
Okay, form established.
Thank you, Treasurer Chapman. We have a quorum. Moving on to-
Vice President Kanuho, I'm sorry. Can we at least say Misty and Georgia's name and to be excused?
Yes, yes, for the record.
Yes, excused are President Misty Nuttall and Secretary George Gardapi.
Yes, thank you for that. On record, we have President Nuttall and Secretary Gardapi as excused this evening. Moving on to item three, approval of agenda. I know we have a couple of revisions to the agenda.
Yes, I can explain those. On number five, Budget Committee Recommendations, we are removing A, approval of 2144 Low-Income Heat and Energy Assistance Program Budget MOD 1, and we are adding to number seven, A number seven, approval to amend resolution number 2254 Constitution Convention Extension. And those are the changes for the agenda updates.
Thank you, Treasurer Chapman. Is there any other discussions to the agenda?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry, Vice President. Yes, Nisharo Leading Fox, something came up he has to deal with. He's on the agenda for Nisharo council updates. I don't know if we need to move that down. I'm waiting to hear from him.
So you want to move item four-
He says he's on his way, but I'm not sure what that means.
Okay. Counsel, where do you want to put item four in Nisharo council updates? Do you want to put that after new business before open forum? Okay.
Everybody's okay with that?
So Nisharo Leading Fox, he's not going to be here in time to give the update on item four in Nisharo council updates? So the recommendation was to move that item down underneath new business? And make that item seven?
We already have seven, don't we? Yeah, we have seven. We just added approval to amend resolution 2254 Constitution Convention Extension. So would the Nisharo be eight?
No, because we're removing it from number four and moving everything up. So if we're putting it at the end, we'll make it number seven and make number, or what we just added, number six.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Counsel, is okay with that? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve with changes.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second by Councilman Evans. No other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yes, Vice President Jordan Kanuho.
Since I'm chairing, I won't vote on this.
Oh, that's right. Forget you're the chair tonight. Okay, Treasurer Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion approved. Moving on to item number four, which is approval of minutes. We have two of them to approve tonight. First one is approval of Pawnee Business Council Meeting Minutes of 4/1 January 2, 2024. With that, is there any discussion from the council or any revisions that need to be made? Hearing none, does anyone have a, anyone have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made by Treasurer Chapman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Hare.
Okay.
Call for the vote, please.
Yes. Treasurer Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries. Moving on to item two, under approval of minutes, approval of Pawnee Business Council Meeting Minutes for January 16, 2024. Any discussions or any revisions to these minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for January 16, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Hare. Call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. Moving on to item number four or five, which is Pawnee Business Council Travel Requests and Reports. Counsel, is there any travel that's coming up, any requests or reports that need to be made? Hearing none, we'll move to item number six, new business. We have new business item number one, approval of resolution 2403, new members enrollment. We have Ms. Carrie Peters with us tonight, who is going to present from our enrollment division.
Good evening. I have resolution 2403, 2404, and 2405. 2403 is the enrollment committee met December 13th and then Nisharo council met on January 20th, and they approved and recommended two applicants for enrollment.
So at this moment, counsel, we're looking at 24, resolution 2403. Is there any discussion or any items discussed on 2403, members, new member enrollment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Butler, second by Councilman Evans. No discussion, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries, resolution 2403 is passed. Permission to resolution 2404, deceased members enrollment.
Again, these were, went before the Nisharo on January 20th and Enrollment Committee December 13th, and it was for 11 of our tribal members who had passed away. And it's to note the date of death on their, on the roll and to remove them from the nudity roll.
Thank you for that. Counsel, is there any discussion on resolution 2404?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motions have been made by Councilwoman Butler.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Hare. Hearing no discussion, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries for resolution 2404, deceased members. Moving on to item three of new business, approval of resolution 2405, conditional relinquishment enrollment.
This tribal member submitted a conditional relinquishment and it was approved by Nisharo to be forward to council.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion on resolution 2405, conditional relinquishment?
I move we accept.
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Evans. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Kimball. No other discussion, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're finished, yes, thank you very much.
So, just, I mean, I don't know if you, we're kind of in an unusual situation, but I know usually we go through and say the names of our, our new members.
Okay.
And to put you on the spot a little here.
The two eligible applicants and newly enrolled on the roll is Clemmie Lee Branch Jr. and Asher Ellis Felice Paulman.
Thank you for that. Also too, don't we usually name those who have on the deceased role as well? Could you also name those who are on the deceased as well? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Scott Chapman, Hattie P. Gibson, Janice G. Horse Chief, Mary Louise Williams, Lucy Linda Kent, Stephanie F. Tegnor, Elizabeth Ann Ishcomer, Joseph Darwin Horse Chief, Michelle Lee Noble, James Lawrence Campbell, Fletcher Christian Blaine.
Thank you for that. Yes, thank you, Carrie, for that. Moving on to item four, under new business, approval of resolution 2406 USDA Reconnect 4 Sovereign Bank Account. Counsel, I can present on this. This is a, one of the requirements under USDA Reconnect 4. The USDA Reconnect project is the broadband project. We discussed with our USDA contact if we could utilize the bank account that's been set up for Reconnect 3 and per their requirement and their guidance, they want us to go ahead and set up a separate account for Reconnect 4, which is going to be the build out within the city of Pawnee, the city of Yale, Portion and Payne County, and middle mile projects between Oklahoma City, Pawnee, Pawnee, Tulsa. And so it's pretty much about $25 million project for this. And so this, this Reconnect 4 Sovereign Bank Account is what we're wanting to look at setting up so that whenever we begin to start receiving funds, we'll put it into that bank account there. So that's what that's for.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Kimball for approval of resolution 2406, seconded by Councilman Evans. Counsel, any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none? Oh, hearing none, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item five, Budget Committee Recommendations, and under that, we have item A, approval of 2145 Low-Income Heat and Energy Assistance Program Infrastructure Budget. Counsel, Treasurer Chapman, will you present on this one this evening?
Yes, I will. There are, there are four items brought before us from the Budget Committee, and all of them are new budgets for 2024. They're the remaining budgets for 2024. And the notice of awards on each one of these were received after we did the budget call and we passed the consolidated budget. So I just wanted to tell you that before we start, that they're all the same and they've, they've either been, the amounts have been increased or decreased. So the first one is the Laheep Infrastructure, 2145. And you should have it in your packets, but it is an increase of $12 for a total of 911. There's any questions on that one? If there's none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the 2145 Low Heat, Low-Income Heat and Energy Assistance Program Infrastructure Budget.
Treasurer Chapman, was that a motion to approve?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve 2145 Low-Income Heat and Energy Assistance Program Infrastructure Budget. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Evans. Counsel, any discussion? Hearing none. Before we call for the vote, I do want to note that Councilwoman Butler had to step away. So Treasurer Chapman, when you call for the vote, just keep that in mind, and we'll call for the vote at this time.
Okay. Treasurer Carol Chapman. Cynthia Butler should be returning in a second. So Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item B, approval of 2146 Community Service Block Grant Budget. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, this is also the same condition. It was a new, new budget for 2024, received after the passing of the consolidated budget. And it, number 2146 Community Service Block Grant Budget is for $405. If anybody has any questions?
Counsel?
Carol, it looks funny.
I know. Jamie, would you explain that one?
I don't think it's right.
It's a decrease.
It's an increase, right, of 405? Or is that the budget? Is that the funding?
For, on the paperwork, it's 2024, it's $405. So it is a decrease.
Of $3,200.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It, the notice of award paper there is with it and it says on the, on the notice of award. I don't, I don't know why. I mean, maybe Jennifer might know why.
Why was this, why was this reduced so much?
It's a federal program. So I'm assuming the funding was cut federally, but I'll check into it and see.
Well, yeah, you don't know why?
No, but I'll look into it. These are all notices of awards that was received after the date.
It's in, it's in the files there. It says total amount of federal funds obligated this budget period, $405. So it's quite a decrease, so.
We don't know why.
So were there any other questions? Jennifer, you're going to recheck on that one? It's a large decrease.
Yes, we're doing that right now.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions?
If, if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and, or do we want to proceed or not, or what?
What do you think, Cynthia? Yeah.
This one is the block grant.
It's the block grant, 2146. And it went from 3,200 to 406, but there's no explanation why.
Right, the notice of award does not say why there's a decrease.
I just think that from the funding agency, that if they don't have that, you know, award us the same amount, they hardly ever award us the same amount. Usually they take it down, take it up, just based off of all of their funding. So I'm just going to say that it's probably from them not having the funds available to just give us, but they're giving us something.
Okay.
I think that that's what this is. Yeah, we should be good. It's just, it's disappointing that we're getting less.
That's the first time I've seen it like that.
Yeah.
It's disheartening.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Treasurer Chapman. Counsel, any other discussion or any questions? Hearing none, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Chapman, Carol Chapman, Cynthia, yes, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, which is approval of 20, of 2182 Family Violence Prevention Services Budget. Treasurer Chapman, would you mind presenting on this?
Yes. This is an increase of $3,337, coming to a total of $60,824. So it's, it's an increase. And it goes along with the notice of award. That's what it says in the document. The official total amount obligated. So if there are not any questions on that, or are there questions on that?
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion for passing this.
All right. Motion's been made by Treasurer Chapman to approve, or budget 2182.
Second.
Second by Councilman Evans. Call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Chapman, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Treasurer Chapman, was your official vote yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And Vice President Kanuho, we do have an answer for the, the previous, is that we get budget mods throughout the year. So we'll get spurts of that. And so, and that's why also, it was a good point that we were saying, this is why you need to vote for your congresspeople because they come up with the funding for each of these federal agencies. Just encouraging people to vote who they put into Congress because they affect the money we get.
Thank you for that, Jennifer. Moving on to item D, which is approval of 4059 Food Distribution Budget. Treasurer Chapman, would you mind presenting on that one?
Yes. This is also the same conditions and it's an increase of $6,649 for a total of $248,522,000 on, on our food distribution, 4059. Are there any questions on it? And if, if not, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Treasurer Chapman. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, this is Sammy Kimball.
All right. Second by Councilwoman Kimball. Counsel, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, please.
Treasurer Carol Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. That takes us on to item number six, under new business, which is discussion and/or action on organizational chart update. Who will be presenting on this? Thank you very much. We have Sunny Evans with us from the agricultural division, presenting on this item here.
There we go. Good evening, counsel. So for the organizational chart, we were with the grace, by the grace of the council, we're awarded to begin a division of agriculture to separate out from property. And within the division of agriculture, there will be four main areas, at least for now, to begin with. We have the cattle, which is the Four Bands Cattle Company, the greenhouse, agricultural management and outreach, which is funded right now through the Native American Agriculture Fund grants that we were awarded. And then we also have the Toddaha Department. And we did get a, we're awarded a grant from, a herd development grant from the Intertribal Buffalo Council to get us started on that, probably working on fixing.
It is fantastic. Yay, Sunny.
With that, counsel, is there any discussion, any, any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball?
Sunny, thank you. Thank your, thank the team there. Properties worked very, very hard. The Department of Ag has really separated itself and elevated itself to have its own division. I mean, we need it. Lots of work done. Thank you for the efforts of not only the, the staff, but also Electa Hare, who has been a big hand in, in doing a lot of writing and collaboration with you. We appreciate all of you.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing her up.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, all of you, all of you. So, yes, I am delighted. It's been a lot of, it's been a lot of work for them. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm good with it.
Vice President Kanuho?
Yes, Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, yes, I would like to also commend this department for the work that they have done. We have, as the council, have initiated and approved a lot of projects in the past three and going on four years. And this program right here, which has evolved into its own division, was one of the most successful efforts made in the tribe. And I want to also commend Jimmy Justice and Sunny and all the people that have worked on that to make this a success. It's like our shining star and I'm very, very pleased and proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Chapman. And we'll pass that along to Division Director Justice.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Treasurer Chapman, for those comments as well. Counsel, any other discussion or any comments? On the org chart, one, as I was looking at it, one thing I was wondering, because you- On the org chart, one, as I was looking at it, one thing I was wondering, cause you have cattle and then you have Tadahaw underneath that as well, I was wondering, um, this is a kind of a discussion for the council, is would we wanna categorize as livestock and under livestock, it be cattle and Tadahaw and anything else that we may have after that? I didn't know if we wanted to, I mean, I didn't know what the, the thought of, like, separated.
It's pretty separate.
Okay.
Because the cattle represents our, our Four Band Cattle Company, right? And then our Tadahaw is gonna be completely separate, because it's gonna have its own little life, I think. After we, yeah, it's kind of like a separate thing.
Okay.
With them. Would you concur with that, Sunny?
I would, and, um, one of the main kind of differences is the cattle is more of a commerce focus. Um, Tadahaw, of course, will have to be self-sustaining, everything here at the nation is an obligation to be fiduciary, show fiduciary responsibility. But it's also going to be working with hopefully Nisharo Council and the, our Cultural Resources Division and look at ways to bring out programming so that our tribal members can really use this as more of a reintroduction with, um, a very long relationship with, um, our siblings, uh, the Tadahaw.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Great question.
Councilwoman here?
Sunny, did you say that we got funded for startup heard, or we have a proposal in?
We did, we recently have gotten the, uh, award notification, it's been sent and it should be going to the Budget Committee soon to get our budget. But yes, we were awarded, um, fifty-five thousand, one hundred dollars, which should be enough to get our, um, fencing, you know, which we haven't decided yet, we'll be going to a, a meeting, but it, if we choose to, it would be enough to get our fencing ready to go. And then the other main restriction is to have a handling facilities, pens and a chute that are safe for the buffaloes, safe for us. And there are other grant, um, opportunities that I think we have a really good shot at getting that done, so hopefully very soon, next year or two.
Well, good job.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and thank you to Electa Hair again, who did a lot of legwork, a lot of writing to get this grant proposal in.
It was awesome, um, for anybody that wants to know, uh, prior to, um, you attending the ITBC, um, annual convention in, in Las Vegas, this team put together a handout of just really what we're about and any, any, um, opportunity for funding agencies there, they were able to hand these out to them and I think that was just really bright. Yeah, hopefully we're gonna get some calls and, you know, get some more funding opportunities, but I thought that was, that was, uh, just really, uh, forward thinking and it was great. Thanks, Sunny.
That's good news. This is just another testament to the council that we have here, who serve in the Pawnee Nation, just the growth that we're seeing. Um, and, and one of it is through the Division of Agriculture, and so I just wanna commend our council too, for the foresight and the leadership that, that they've been given to this as well. And also to, to, uh, Sunny and also, uh, Jimmy Justice and those who have been helping, such as Electa, those who've been given volunteer hours as well. Um, to me, I think that's a, a great stride and, and a, and a direction that the Pawnee Nation hasn't seen before, and so that's, that's good to see that, so. Counsel, any other, uh, discussion or any other comments? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the, uh, proposed, um, organizational chart.
I will approve the Division of Ag. Is that the only thing that's there? I have some questions about the other gray things, but the, uh, Division of Ag, I'm good with. I do have questions on the rest.
Okay. So, uh, Councilman Kimball, is that a motion to approve that portion for the Division of Ag on our org chart?
Yes, unless you guys wanna do it all together, but I, there's more discussion for me. Is this gray, are these gray areas that new, um, Jen? Okay, I thought we were taking taro and moving it out from underneath the Division of Education, it's a, it's a, it, it stands out by itself, it should be, um, a dotted line. I thought it was like that before. It's. What, Brian? Okay, we're gonna have a big taro discussion anyway, so I think that would be really good and we'll address it then. Thank you, okay. Okay, okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I would second, uh.
Yeah.
The, um, the new portion, uh, including Ag.
Okay.
Thank you, Doc.
Motion's on the floor and seconded by, uh, Councilman Evans. Hearing no other discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Uh, Treasure, Carol Chapman, yes, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Motion carries, we're moving on to, uh, item number seven under new business, which is approval to amend Resolution twenty-two fifty-four Constitution Convention Extension. Who will present on this one?
Apologizing.
No, that's fine.
I did wanna hear more discussion on the org chart and I was just like, you know, cause I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Kimball that, you know, the fitness center is underneath taro in EEOC, but I thought it was underneath education and that taro was under, anyways. Yes, please, let's have discussion on that, because that's, you know, it, it doesn't follow with their law either, because their law says that you're over taro and that they're not under education, so we're not even following our own law with our organizational chart, so we really need that to match our laws. Just wanted to say that little bit, cause it was bothering me.
I can tell the hesitancy on that, on that, yes.
I was like, sorry.
No, that's fine, no, that's fine.
It's just that our organizational chart should reflect what our laws say and, and inconsistencies where we're trying to get. So I think that that is a discussion that needs to come back up on the agenda. So that, so that we're following in line with what their organizational chart is, um, and their, their laws and are the same with, for us.
So with that, Jennifer, would you mind working on that and having someone present possibly for the council?
Yes, however, I know that taro's gonna be talked about soon, so do we wanna update the org or do we wanna do the taro discussion and then do that, because there's several things.
No, I, I think the org chart as it stands is incorrect.
Yes.
It is not, it is not a, a little department, it's its own little entity. So I think it needs to be separated, as you and I both would agree.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to take us back to the discussion, but I just felt that I had to say it, cause I was just like, it nee- it needs to be talked about.
Thanks, Cynthia.
All right, um, so Resolution twenty-two fifty-four, uh, the Constitution Convention delegates are, we're almost done. And we want to, we're working on language for our main three, um, articles, which is the membership and the Sharo Council and then the, um, article for removal, forfeiture, removal, suspension and, uh, recall. Um, they wanted just a little bit more time, because this is the important part where we, we do the language to present to the people. And the membership one is taking a little bit more time, because we wanna get it right. We wanna give them the options of what we're gonna do. And, um, so they're asking for a couple of months of extension, I think we're gonna be able to finish the language part. Um, and then we're gonna have some work groups, I know we're setting up a work group with council, so they can go over the revisions, our suggested revisions. We're also going to do, I think, two more, um, community meetings. Um, so that we're still getting it out to the people and then after that, we will start, come back to council and request for a secretarial election, um, to take it to the people for a vote. Uh, so they're asking for, uh, to be able to be, to continue their work through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so it's given us about two and a half months, so. That's what we're ramping forward.
Cynthia, I have a question, I sent an email over to, um, and I don't know why, I sent it to Carol Nuttall and to Misty, because I think they were, there was a little chain of, uh, emails going back and forth, and I never received a response. And I will say this much, folks, if you get an email, it's very rude and unprofessional not to at least acknowledge the email. It happens all the time and i- if we can just acknowledge, hey, I read that and let me research or let me whatever, I'm good with that, but just to be hung up in this loop is just really crazy for me. Um, I asked them if they would ensure that we have culture and language built into that constitution. I think it's imperative that we have it, 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 it will help us with funding and it'll help that, that entity of ours be alive. And, and we'll be able to, um, have that. So if we could just please include, ensure that the culture and language of the Pawnee people is in that constitution, I would really be grateful for it. And then if it goes out to vote and people disagree, well, that's great, but at least let's have it and let's protect it.
I, I do wanna say it's in our Bill of Rights, I, I think that's something that was added, but I'd have to look.
Yeah, I, I, not the Bill of Rights, our constitution, yeah.
Yeah, it, the Bill of Rights is inside the constitution, I think that's what the title would be, sorry.
So you're okay. Yeah, I just wanna ensure, it, it helps for funding and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kimball, um, counsel, any other discussion? So currently, right now, we have on the floor is Resolution twenty-two fifty-four, amend, uh, amending this resolution to, uh, extend this resolution to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to, uh, give the Constitution Convention time to, uh, finalize some items there, so.
I'll make the motion to extend.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Kimball, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Evans. Hearing no other discussion, call for the vote, please.
Treasure Chapman, yes, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries, um.
Vice President Cano?
Yes.
I, I, I did look it up, Ms. Sammy. Ms. Sammy. I, I did look it up, cause I, I knew that we had, we're proposing some language for the Bill of Rights and it's gonna be a new section, uh, section six and it has all, what you're talking about in there, so whenever we go over it with council.
Perfect.
We'll, we'll discuss it.
That's all I needed, I just needed that little, yes, we got it. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, counsel.
Yep, thank you, Councilwoman Butler.
Yep.
Thank you very much. That finishes out new business, uh, moving on now, under our approved amended agenda, we're gonna go to item number, would that be number s- eight, which will be Nisharo Council Updates, we have the Sado, uh, Lady Fox with us this evening. Turn the floor over to him.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this time, you know, it's really exciting to hear all this, what's going on here. You know, I wanna commend all you guys too, because it starts from the top and it trinkles down to the staff. You know, I mean, I've never seen this much activity out here, you know, I've been, I lived here almost my whole life. You know, and, and it says something about you guys, you know, I always brag on all y'all, you know, to other people when I go out of town. You know, that things are happening here, you know, and we, you know, we were stagnant there for a little while, but, I mean, look at us now, you know, we're growing. And it feels good and it's to thank for you guys. So I have a, I have a couple of, of, of things that, um, you know, our secretary had brought, uh, an issue to the Nisharo Council about this, uh, death protocol, what to do, you know, when, when someone passes away. So, um, we had met two times on it and the recommendation that came from the Nisharo Council is to form a type of advisory. They don't wanna call it a committee, because they feel we got too many committees, some kinda advisory team, advisory council. You know, two chiefs on there, maybe one or two from this body here, the council, Business Council, uh, maybe somebody on the CRD. Uh, definitely, um, Larry and or Junior. You know, and then, you know, I don't know who else, but, you know, we'd like to, you know, get that formed, you know, qu- quick. So we can get this issue, you know, behind us. And, um, the other deal was the, the earth lodge, so they, they picked a site, you know, and, uh, I don't know if we need to go to the property committee for that. But they're looking at where Clickfield's house was, it's just directly east of the courthouse in that open area where that se- that cellar's at. There's an open area right there, it's flat, can be seen from the homecoming. You know, so that's what, that's, we're still waiting on, uh, Matt to do some ground penetrating radar, lidar. Make sure, you know, there's nothing archaeological there that would, you know, inhibit us to do that. But that's where we're at on that. And I believe that's, I think that's it. So just, you know, a little bit, the, just, the, the main deal was that advisory, you know, we were wanting one or two off from, from the Business Council, yes, Donna?
So, yeah, it would be the Land Use and Property Committee and we have a meeting, um, the third Wednesday of the month, ten o'clock, yeah. So if you're ready, this one, it'll be the week, what, not, uh.
So shall we just invite him?
In two weeks, yes.
Or, or just put me on, if I can be on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll put you on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So on the fifteenth?
Fifteenth. What time?
Ten.
Okay, all right, next week. I believe I can do that.
We'll send you an invite, Pat.
Okay, all right, okay, now that was it, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any, uh, questions or any comments?
Well, I just think that, you know, in light of everything that, uh, you know, we've had, I'm really grateful for it, because sometimes it's kinda awkward, you know, do we go, do we not? You know, what, what are we doing? And I think that, that responsibility really does lay wi- with you all. And, uh, I appreciate, you know, the, the advisory team that you're putting together and I'm really grateful that we're gonna have that discussion. Yeah, we need it, thank you for that.
Yeah. One, hey, just kidding. No, I appreciate that, uh, update from our Nisharo Council and again, thank you at the Sado, the Leading Fox for being here this evening, just to bring us up to date on, on the discussions that have been made from our Nisharo Council. Uh, thankful for the, uh, the constitution that we currently have, that distinguishes those, those bodies that are separate. Pawnee Business Council is separate from the Nisharo Council, but we do obviously work together at times to discuss these issues and matters that are needed to be discussed for, uh, the betterment of our Pawnee Nation people, so I appreciate that. Moving on to, uh, item number nine, which is open forum, um, at this time, we'll open it up to anyone here this evening or, um, Jamie, do we have anybody online? Okay, so nobody currently online. Counsel, is there any items that needs to be discussed under an open forum? Sado, the Leading Fox?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, the War Mothers are having a hand game this Sunday, two o'clock at the Community House, just to kinda announce that.
Okay. This Sunday at two P M, War Mothers are having a hand game at the Community House, so. Be ready to get that orange again, that potato, get that grease off your head and ready to play that potato, no.
I'd also like to, uh, wish my Aunt Wanda Canuho a happy eighty-ninth birthday today.
Yes, yes.
Uh-huh, happy birthday, Auntie.
Yes.
We all love you.
Yes, today is my Ukit's birthday and, uh, so thankful to have her, um, eighty-nine years, um. One of our, our well-respected elders of our, of our tribe, so thankful to have her. If she is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call her out, it's the oldest eight. Okay, good. There, yeah, probably is. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, definitely, thankful to still have the elders we have. Counsel, um, there is one item that I did wanna mention during open forum, that was to discuss the Behavioral Health Facility. Um, if you've noticed, the construction is continuing to be ongoing over there, uh, thankful to see that and, um, you know, we've had, um, pictures and updates, uh, posted on Facebook and LinkedIn and those kinds of things as well. Um, one of the matters that we have, um, I've talked to Brian about this and this is more for the LLC side and we wanted to just bring this to the council, just to let them be aware of this, is that on the LLC side, uh, the construction is ongoing and we're finalizing the, um, the, the bank documents. And as we're finalizing that, some of the work that was started back in November, some of the vendors are, uh, have invoices that have been outstanding and so uh, one of the things that we've done, and I've talked to Brian about this, is that we've identified some funding, um, from the revenue replacement funds to, um, take care of that at the current time, um, for that, and what we'll do is once the bank, once everything's finalized with the bank, then we'll take that funding from the revenue replacement that we've used for the invoices and put that back into the revenue replacement. And so, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, uh, from the LLC side, just so that we can keep things moving forward without having to stop and everything like that, so. Um, if there's any questions from the council, I'll be happy to answer those. So if there's any questions from the council, I'll be happy to answer those, and Brian's here too to help answer any of those questions as well. But we wanted to let the council know, as I was telling Brian, that is that, you know, the Pawnee Nation is over the LLC and everything else, and the PBC needs to be aware of any funding that's going to be used for that. So that's why I wanted to bring that to y'all's attention tonight as well.
So a swing loan, huh?
Basically, yeah.
Basically, all right, all right.
Yeah.
There was tremendous work. I mean, I was out to the clinic today and it was active, and there was a lot of movement going over there. I, I'm hoping that we have Tarot workers that are going to be over there working. I didn't see any of our, our native kids over there working today, but I'm hoping that Tarot gets, gets involved and gets moving over there at Behavioral Health. I love it.
Good, good.
Yeah, in fact. You're ready. You're ready. Yeah, in fact, there's a Facebook advertisement for Tarot workers right now. So if you need a job, please, please reach out to our Tarot team and come and apply.
Definitely, yes. We got work for you, for sure. It's coming, it's coming. That'll be good.
And, and then speaking of that, just as an open forum, I'm going to circle back around to Jennifer and HR is that we are still waiting to see some type of documentation for reentry into the workforce for those with felonies, you know, felonies. And if we could get that tied up before the next council meeting, please, we, we need to get that moving. We've got people that need to work, that can work, and want to work.
We have interviews Thursday for HR firms, so once we have an HR firm in place.
Who is it?
We have interviews on Thursday.
Oh, interviews.
Yes, so that's on deck.
Who's interviewing?
We have two firms, and let me pull up their names real quick.
No, who, who is, on our teams are interviewing for those firms?
Who on our team? Madam President, myself, we have someone. Of course, my brain is tired.
Sorry, it's late.
My brain's tired.
Okay, let us know by email, would you?
I'll, I'll send you an email, yes. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to get that in place, especially when, when employment is really going to be jumping here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. Councilman here?
Thank you. One thing I did want to say earlier was I wanted to extend our sympathies to all the families, you know, that have lost members, whenever we wrote, read, whenever Carrie read about the members that we've lost since our, this quarter. I did want to mention that I serve on the Oklahoma State University Advisory Committee for the American Indians in Psychology. It's one of the, one of three programs in the United States, and they have been in operation since 1996. So we're up for another five-year contract if we can grant, if we can get it. And, and at one point, oh, it's really helpful, it put OSU up in number one in clinical psychologist, Indian clinical psychologist. And so really would, I'm working to get a letter of support here from the tribe for the program because it can be a pipeline. The program can be a pipeline, you know, for us, and we could do some coordination, you know, on developing it with American Indians in Psychology. So anyway, we're working on that, and I've been sending out some emails, trying to get some letters of support for Dr. Chaney. It's Dr. John Chaney, and he's been over it since the inception. So him and Patricia Alexander, and some of you guys may remember them, they used to come over here for tours at Pawnee, but we don't really have the mental health facility, didn't have the mental health facilities. Now, you know, we'll probably be put back on the tour route for it, so. But they work with the, with the other tribes that has hospitals and stuff, and they go in in the summer. And, and a lot of them are, that have gone through that summer program, they're now clinical psychologists, and they are the board, you know, the advisory board, so it's, it's a fantastic, you know, program.
Good, that's good to hear that as well. Thank you for that, Councilwoman here. I noticed Treasure Chapman has her hand up. Treasure Chapman?
Yes, thank you, Vice President. I just wanted to mention that the Pawnee Nation has been awarded the settlement, the opioid settlement funds, which are going to be a very nice addition to what we are doing with our new mental health facility. And this week, the, the council has been invited to the meeting with the staff and the directors of Pawnee Nation to discuss the things that we can do to address the opioid epidemic. And this is very exciting because this is a way that these funds will be decided to serve the people in the community and to connect to our new Behavioral Health Center. So it's, it's really a very, very big, big, important project that is going to benefit the health and wellness of our Pawnee people and our families when we are finished with this. So it's just exciting. I just wanted to mention that, that that's coming too. Thanks.
Yes, it's also exciting news to see that happening for our Pawnee Nation as well. And so just definitely going to be working towards that too. So thank you for that update as well, Treasure Chapman. Councilman Evans?
Oh, I just wanted to say on the Behavioral Health Center side of things, just, one example of, of having some vision, you know, and, and folks looking to our, our future, where we want to be and what we want to do. You know, being able to identify an area where there is a real need, not just for, for the Pawnee Nation, but for this whole area, this whole part of the state. And then, you know, to, to have the audaciousness maybe to, to think, you know, that we could do something about it. And it's great that we're doing a good thing. At the same time, it's a good thing for our people, and this is something that's not just a break-even kind of thing with an expectation that, that, that there'll be rewards that come from it, that I think will help all of, all of our people. So just got to, just give thanks to those who've worked so hard on this and had that vision. I know our Vice President, Brian, many, many folks. And so I want to say I appreciate you guys, and, and I appreciate the vision and, like I say, the audacious kind ofness of, of thinking that big. And we're on this, this cusp of making it happen. We're, we are started. It's a cool, amazing thing. We can do great things. We just got to keep that mindset, so thank you.
Certainly, and I appreciate the work that Brian's been doing on this as well, just keeping this thing moving forward. He's meeting with Ascension and other, other entities as well to keep this thing moving. And with the work that President Nuttall, myself, and Treasure Chapman do as far as the LLC goes, it's definitely something we continue to keep pushing forward and just continuing to let the council know as far as the updates and where we're at on, on that as well. We're excited for it, and, and just to see the progress happening over there with the constructions, just to see that vision actually taking shape and taking form, and so it's just good to see that happening with us. And it's not just the Behavioral Health, it's the other, the other aspects that we have moving forward as well, and renewable and, and broadband and agriculture. I'm excited for the agriculture aspect of that as well, and just seeing where the nation can go from there, so that's good. Executive Director?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that next, the next PBC meeting, we are going to add to the agenda. So the second PBC meeting of every month will be an update from all of our energy projects as well as our Behavioral Health Facility, as well as any other infrastructure projects. So that's going to be our normal meeting. Then we'll have just cadenced updates so that the PBC, as well as our citizens, can hear all this great stuff that's happening with the nation, because there's a lot.
Definitely. That'll be good. All right, anything else under open forum? Hearing none, going to item number, would that be nine, set the next meeting date. Setting the next meeting date. February 20th is our next scheduled meeting. February 20th, 5:30. All right, we'll have that set. Item 10, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Kimball, seconded by Councilwoman Butler. Call for the vote, please.
Treasure Chapman, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh-huh.
Jeanne Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Motion carries. We adjourn 6:43. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff.